Do you have Wendy? Wendy with us?
Yep.
All right. We're ready, right? We'll give Dave a second to get settled.
My apologies.
That's okay. All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Ask everybody to join us in the pledge to the flag. Everyone to join us in the pledge to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, thank you for being with us. I think the people here know the announcements by heart, so I think we can just skip those tonight and move right to the agenda. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the August 6th meeting minutes.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Are there any questions or comments? We shall vote on approval.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Four votes to the affirmative. We've approved the minutes and we'll move to the treasures report. I would note there was about $9,000 in interest, 1,200 in fines, and about $75 in pavilion rentals. And we took in more money than we spent. Part of that was cable franchise fees and part was finally receiving the settlement that's been long overdue regarding the architect and the building. Questions or comments on the minutes?
I like interest.
Yep. You have to add it all up because if you go through all of it...
Yeah, but I like earned interest.
Comments or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the treasures report.
Second?
Have a motion and a second to approve the treasures report?
My daughter was found by a packet.
Any questions? We shall vote.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Five votes to the affirmative. We've approved the treasures report. We have an initial opportunity for public comment. Anybody want to address it at this time? All right, we will move on. First item on ordinance and resolutions is authorizing advertisement of the regional comprehensive plan. We handle all these in one motion, Todd? Let's do them individually. You want to comment on the regional comp plan?
Yeah, the regional comp plan, of course, that's with the four boroughs, New Freedom, Glen Rock, Railroad, and Shrewsbury. It's been to York County Planning Commission. They had some review and comments. We got those back. We made the edits, so it's ready to advertise for adoption at our October meeting.
Questions for Todd or...
Yeah, I don't like here it says that Shrewsbury Township needs to provide for additional residential development to offset the need of the boroughs. Why does the township have to...
That's one thing that's been changed. That's the old...
That kind of defeats our purpose here.
Yeah. That's been changed.
Changed mainly because the population statistics that they relied on, York County Planning Commission said, no, they're not accurate and more accurate have fewer requirements, so it all fit in okay. I think that's a brief summary, but that's gone now.
Okay.
Any other questions? So what we're looking for is just a motion to authorize advertisement at this time.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to authorize advertisement of the regional comprehensive plan. No more questions? We shall vote.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Five votes to the affirmative. We move on to zoning text amendment. Todd, want to comment on that one?
Yeah, this is short-term lodging.
Yeah, it's a text amendment to the zoning ordinance related to short-term rentals. Again, this one's been through our planning commission. It's been before years the board. It's been the York County Planning Commission. They made their review and comment. The only comment they had under planning had to do with definition of family. Staff feels that that should remain as it is. They had three items for editing, which we agree all should be taken care of and included in the amendment. So we would need a motion to authorize advertisement of an ordinance for, and you can do this all in one motion. It would be a text amendment to the zoning ordinance for short-term rentals, but there would also be an ordinance for amendment to chapter 11, which is housing, which will be referenced in the zoning ordinance. And in that chapter 11, it'll also be an accompanying international property maintenance code would be adopted as well under that ordinance. So you can put all that into one motion because one requires the other.
So we would be looking for a motion that would approve authorization to advertise and also to adopt the international maintenance code. Right? So is there a motion to that?
I'll make a motion to that effect.
Second?
So we have a motion and a second that we would advertise short-term lodging text amendment for advertisement and that we would adopt the international maintenance code. Questions? Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Five votes to the affirmative. That's so done, and we have a zoning map amendment, Todd?
Oh, yeah, and then the last item here. This motion would be to authorize advertisement of the zoning map amendment. This is for Strawberry Road. This would be to rezone the Miller Farm and the Raymire property to offset what we would be losing in development rights because they're receiving districts with the purchase of 13 and a half acres from the Miller Farm that will be attaching to the Miller Family Park. Now, this one, you know, in that motion, we would not hear this until our November 1st, I think it is, but our November meeting, because that would coincide with the same meeting in which we plan to approve the subdivision plan of the Miller Farm for the additional land to the park.
So this one would be advertised later than the other two?
Correct.
Make a motion to approve the advertisement of the zoning map amendment for Strawberry Road at our November 1st meeting.
Second?
We have a motion and a second would authorize advertising of the zoning map amendment. Probably be advertised, what, in October rather than September? Questions? We shall vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Five votes to the affirmative. We have approved advertising that amendment. So we move to subdivision and land development. We have on Boyer Road, William Solomon, and two things we'll look at. First, modification requests, and then both primary and final land development plan.
Yeah, I just realized here I double-clicked on my subdivision plan for Solomon. It's just the comments, it's not the plan, but the board, you all have the plan in front of you in paper format, so I apologize to anyone in the audience. One of the audience members knows it by heart, so we're good there. I guess we can run through these modification requests. Jason Brenneman with James R. Holly is the associate, is here representing Mr. Solomon. I don't know if he has any comments, but the waiver requests are the requirement of sidewalks, replacement, or the requirement of a scale 100 feet or greater on the plan. The critical environmental area is not being shown, and the reason for that is there's no new development proposed with this subdivision. Existing contours at five-foot intervals. Again, this is the subdivision of an existing home and no proposed development with the remainder of the farm and as well showing the wetlands. This has been before the Township's Planning Commission. They recommended approval, as did staff recommend approval. So the board has any specific questions?
What are you doing, cutting a lot off of where his house is up there?
Yeah, do you have your paper copy there? I apologize because I put on this one the wrong document. But what he's basically doing on Boyer Road, he's subdividing just a little bit of land around the existing house, and then the remainder of the farm will stay as it is, and there will be no homes on it, but there will be one development rate, you know, if someone decides they want to build a home later.
Was it right there in the field going down Boyer Road before he gets his...
His house. No, his actual house that he lives in.
Oh, the actual house?
Yes.
How much acreage is he keeping with the house?
Just roughly 50,000 square feet.
Yeah.
So it's literally just taking the house and making it a separate parcel, and everything else around it is, what, 100 acres or plus?
Yeah, it still leaves about 104 or something.
Well, he sold off the lower side towards Doppington.
Correct. Yeah, so this is the one that runs along Boyer and then Ingham cuts through.
Yes, he just wants to...
All he's subbing off is the existing house that he lives in today. That's it.
And I don't think we even need to comment about sidewalks because that would come up if it was ever developed, which is highly unlikely because there are no development rights.
Right, but we'll still need to approve, yeah, I agree, on the plan. I don't think either we need that.
Staff is comfortable with the modification?
Yeah, staff recommends approval, as did the Township Planning Commission.
And it needs big attention upon the August 1st CS Davidson letter?
Well, we'll do that with the plan.
My apologies.
Yep, we're just on the modification. It's all right.
And on the 100 acres, there'll still be one development rate?
One development rate left over, yes.
It's gonna be a very large home. Kidding.
Could be.
Make a motion to approve the modification requests for the Solomon subdivision?
Second?
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the five modification requests you have in front of you. If there are no more questions, we shall vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Five votes to the affirmative. The modification requests are approved. Now we'll look at approval of the preliminary and final plan, all at the same time. Questions?
Correct, you have a copy, CS Davidson review letter dated August 1st.
Right.
The majority of this, it has to do with the modification requests and a couple administrative items. So again, staff recommends approval, as did the Township Planning Commission, and we would ask that when you make that motion, if you do so to approve it, that it's on the condition that all the outstanding items, if any, of that August 1st letter are addressed.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the final subdivision plan for the Solomon project contingent upon the completion of any outstanding applicable items on the August 1st, 2025 CS Davidson letter.
Second?
We have a motion and a second that would approve the plan conditional upon the CS Davidson letter. Questions? Shall vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Five votes to the affirmative. We have approved that, and we have, I guess, a subdivision plan, but it's taking place...
Are you here for that one as well?
No, I'm not here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, you too. Yeah, this is a subdivision. It's actually taking place in Cadorus Township. And the little portion of it that is in Shrewsbury Township is not affected by this at all, so it'd be very similar to what we just did a month or two ago with Hopewell Township, that we defer all the action to Hopewell or to Cadorus Township, I'm sorry.
Questions or a motion? I'll make the motion that we approved deferring all the approvals and reviews of that subdivision to Cadorus Township.
I'll second it.
So I have a motion and a second. Questions? We shall vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Five votes to the affirmative. We have approved that. We move to reports. Manager's report is first up. Todd, any further comments you want to make?
I don't think, other than, let's see here, just if you have any specific budget requests, if you can get them to me by September 8th. I did put a form in your packet. Other than that, I think everything's pretty self-explanatory.
Any questions for Todd? All right, we'll move on to zoning. Well, Solicitor is not here.
My only question is, how's Tim doing? Have we spoken to him?
Good.
Wonderful.
He's doing real well.
Wonderful.
He's really enjoying his first Wednesday night of the month.
Seminar on estate planning, if anybody's interested. Tim and another attorney. It's three different nights in September that they're giving it on estate planning.
Oh, it's like a seminar or what?
Yep. That's open to anybody that wants to attend. Is that their office in your...
Tim?
Oh, Tim and it's another attorney from their firm. So he's alive and well and active.
Wonderful.
I have the zoning officer, codes enforcement, sewage enforcement. Any questions for Todd from the reporter? Any comments Todd wants to make? Todd and I had a chance to review it, so it's pretty thorough and looks like the follow-up that needs to be done is scheduled. All right, we'll move on to maintenance report. Any comments there or questions for Todd or comments by Todd?
I just draw your attention, again, you can read that here, but you know, the traffic signal at Mount Airy and Forest Avenue, we share that equally with Shrewsbury Borough, and we have CM High is the contractor for the traffic signal maintenance, and they perform part of that contract with them is that they perform an annual... Is it annual or semi-annual? I forget. I think it's annual. Inspection, you know, just of all the signage and so forth. Well, the majority of the signage there was getting faded and so forth, so we talked to Brian and we just thought, it's a busy intersection, there's a lot of signs, and we agreed that we would just replace all the signage at one time, so that intersection has all new signage.
Did we pay for that or did the borough split it?
We split it, yeah.
And it was all done by night, most of it?
Yeah, it was done by night. It was Ryan and Tyler here and Tony, and then the borough had two or three guys?
Three guys.
Yeah, so they had two bucket trucks out there. You started at, what, 9:00, 10:00 o'clock at night?
Yeah, they were all over it by... I think they were all over it by night.
Yeah, so they said it worked out really well. Wasn't a lot of heavy traffic. It was a weeknight, so, yep. Other than that, again, everything else, we got the micro-surfacing completed.
Other than the lines, right?
Correct, and that's scheduled for two to three weeks, so...
Is that just gonna be double yellow or are we gonna have white on the side?
It's gonna be all, it's gonna be like it was, just like it was prior to the Michael Thompson. So double yellow, and then they are doing all of Mount Airy, so you'll see the new, you know...
Like the turn lanes or whatever at the bottom of the hill?
The only thing we're not doing, like the hour, we don't think it's still a huge thing, so they're all saying the same, but all the lines should be done. They're doing a couple of stop cars, and we're gonna do a couple of them also.
And Country Club Road.
Country Club Road.
Yeah.
Oh.
Where are they doing the speed signs on Steltz Road?
That, when?
Where at are you? You could do it out there.
Do you know where Wildison's live? It's right there, because we're gonna actually be putting, we went out, Ryan and I went out and checked. We had a request for a school bus stop sign there, you know, warning sign, and we went out to see if it met the requirements for, under PennDOT, because if within 500 feet from the stop, you know, there's a sight distance that you can't see if there's a bus stopped or whatever, which it failed miserably, so we will be putting up the bus warning signs, but that is where we're also gonna put up the speed signs. In fact, they went out yesterday, today.
So they're there.
Yeah.
So are you gonna touch base sometime with the lady just to let her know since she called?
Yeah, yeah, yep.
I have her contact information at home if you don't have it.
Yeah, I probably have it somewhere.
I'll look through mine, too, when I have it. CS Davidson report, anything, questions there? Usually stands for itself. Recommission, I guess there's no report other than received 60 or 60, 65 or something like that?
60-some resumes.
Resumes. Hard to find, not too many of them are in the state. That's one of the bad things, they're all over the country, and it, most are gym-related fitness people, teachers, so a lot of them don't fit too well, so it's a meeting tomorrow to try to review the resumes and pick up a few that, actually, the person who was our second choice last time did reapply, but probably have to think about that one, too. I don't know where he's living now, whether it's Texas or Pennsylvania, and a lot of...
I think he's back in the area.
A lot of the resumes, I mean, there are three pages thick that just is a short listing of all the jobs they've had.
Really?
Oh, yeah, a lot of them are really job movers.
That's not a good sign.
And all over the country, too.
It's not a good sign.
So you know, I think what, since Jeff's here and all the committee, kind of what you look at is, I don't think we're big enough to really attract an out-of-state, and you need somebody with some kind of ties in the area to stay in the area, so...
I just, it's a tough one, I think, it's gonna be to fill.
Yep. A lot of these people are from cities with a million people, cities with 900,000 people. I mean, that's just, doesn't fit us, so I'm sure we'll find something in there that'll work.
I have one question back on maintenance.
No, it's too late.
Too late? Okay.
Go ahead.
Oh, the micro-surfacing on Mount Airy Road, that looks really nice. I was just curious to know, do we do the striping on the road for the center or does that get subcontracted out?
We subcontract that out, and that's scheduled for two to three weeks, they said, till they come back, yeah.
Is driver Brad Steltz Hills, did Brad drive down it, check it out?
Yeah.
Yeah.
How fast did you go, Brad?
Carry on, Mr. Chilton.
Was it wet? I haven't had a lot of rain, I haven't had a lot of rain since it's been done.
Take a fire truck and hose it down, then.
We don't have a fire and EMS report. I saw something from Stan. He sent a report.
Oh, I did not see that.
I got it by email, so it wasn't anything unusual or different. A couple of things that are coming up, a couple of things to do, but he did, I think he sent it sometime today, Todd.
Yeah, I'm looking.
If anybody really wants a copy, I have it and can send it to you.
I'll make sure I forward it on to everybody.
Okay.
If I can't, can I back up to the, to the fire and EMS? Brad had brought up last month about, over at the markets and so forth. Just wanted to follow up with the board. On August 20th, Kevin, myself, and two of the owners from the markets, we met and walked through the south building, and we found the door Brad was talking about, but we actually went to every door, and Kevin told them whether or not it met under the UCC code. There were some things that they weren't required to change, but they're going to change. Some of the doors, and again, I don't know the building code, some of the doors are not required to have panic on both doors, but our understanding from them, they're gonna put panty cardboard on all the doors. He recommended that, like, one of the doors, I think one and out of the double, one out of the double doors had like the turn knob to lock it, you know, keyed on the outside, then the inside just has a turn knob you can lock and unlock. Kevin recommended that they get double keyed for both sides because of, you know, if somebody wants to do some harm, I guess he's heard about where people lock the doors. People, you know, they panic and they can't exit and whatever, so they're gonna do things like that. And then Kevin, while he was through, also looked at all the emergency lighting, and there was two, the one hallway furthers to the south and then the half of the one hallway toward the east in the back corner there. It had emergency lighting, but it didn't really light up the aisles, and then some of the other aisles, there was lighting there, but they're gonna move a lot of it out and relocate it so that the aisleways are actually lit up, so they were very cooperative and so...
Were any of the doors blocked?
They were not, now. With that said, one thing Kevin picked up on that he pointed out, one of the double doors going out, they had a step ladder, pretty tall step ladder leaning up against the wall there, which, you know, more than enough room for two people to get through, but it was in front of the fire pole, you know, for the alarm, so he told them, can't have that there. And one of the, trying to think, no, this was over in the, no, I think it's the same door where the slide lock was. There's like a refrigerator there to the left, and the pull, the alarm pull, and the strobe light are behind the refrigerator, so you couldn't reach it, so, and there was one other place where they're gonna relocate, so they're gonna relocate those things as well, so...
Is there a date to, there's some point in time you're gonna have to go look at it, because right now you still have the...
No, Kevin will go back and do the inspections.
But you still have a do not?
Right.
No, there currently is no do not.
Okay.
So that's been lifted for this building? Okay.
We're still waiting on a Knox box key, but I don't know if they're gonna rekey those locks, if they're changing that. When you go in the front doors to that building, you know, a set of double doors that go into food area?
Right.
And then another set of double doors that go to...
The gift.
That set is keyed differently, and that's where the firearm handle is?
I'll make a note on that. Well, sounds like some good progress. So that's good. Okay. That's all I had under.
Okay, yeah, thank you. I sure wanted to go through that. Sewer committee, I guess we're not gonna do anything until your meeting with Brian.
Yeah, and that's on the 11th.
Hopefully next week, I'm gonna go over the results of what we found and kind of say, okay, we've done all that, now you're gonna give us some EDUs.
And I'll send out, probably will be next week, meat or a survey of all, try to get a township meeting set up, you know, for the sewer committee in early October.
Questions on any of those topics from anybody?
What was that meat truck up there in Walmart, they have a problem with selling meat in the parking lot?
Mm-hmm, yeah, they can't be operating out of the parking lot.
By the auto stores?
Yeah. I'll put it against.
Todd chased them.
That'll be.
Yep, they can't do that, nor can they have the pit beef that they've had there several times, too.
I was, I often wondered that if that pit beef was left.
Yep, so I think that's been addressed, too.
Yeah, I don't know, we're gonna actually send a letter to, I wouldn't call it Auto Zone, it's not Auto Zone.
It's Advance Auto.
Advance Auto.
They're not letting Auto Zone in.
Advance Auto, we're gonna send a letter to them because they're the ones that are granting permission. Now, Advance Auto has the occasional, you know, scouts will do a car wash or something. Our zoning ordinance does allow for like one or two-day events with the zoning officer's approval for nonprofit organizations for fundraising events like that, so they'll be able to continue that.
No, Todd, talked to them, and actually, I guess, middle of the day, the meat truck packed up and left, so...
There's some of these fines for not getting the sewer pumped. Really getting pretty expensive. I wonder why these people don't get their subjects pumped? 14,000 dollars?
Yeah, we have, we have one that came in today. Actually, you know, we went to district court. You know, we send the original notice, a pass due, and a delinquent notice, and then when that doesn't happen, then we go to district court, and when we get to all these points and these different levels, it's because we've actually had no response from them at all. There's no communication. Um, so we go to district court. And the reason you're seeing those real high fines is because they're default fines, because they did not respond even to the courts. So you don't respond to the court, they automatically, you know, place, put judgment in favor of the, uh, of the township. And then, you know, they have those fines, uh, if, if they get it, let me back up. They get the fines, then if they don't pay the fines or still get it pumped, then we turn it over CGA for, for collection. And that starts the, the sheriff sale process. So we have one off of Deer Creek Road, um, that slated for sheriff sale, the, all their contents, except for the kids' bedrooms, for September ninth. That caught their attention and they contacted our attorney to see what they could do to get it resolved. So we're, you know, our goal, as you know, is to get it, get it pumped. But they also have to pay some kind of fine to help cover our administrative costs. So they're gonna pay a five-hundred-dollar fine and with what cost the, the attorney has in it so far and what he plans or thinks he should have, um, if, as long as they remain cooperative, is another three-thousand dollars. So they're gonna be paying thirty-five-hundred dollars because they didn't get their septic tank pumped for two-hundred-and-fifty. And they do have the septic system pumped. So they were in today. The agreement is, uh, he has it scheduled. He brought in two-thousand dollars today, which postponed the sheriff sale for ninety days. And, uh, he's gonna make arrangements through our solicitor to, uh, pay the balance off in installments.
And he was actually pretty friendly about it, you said.
Pardon?
And you said he was actually pretty friendly about it.
Yeah, this guy was friendly, um, but we had another one. What we typically do in cases like this, what normally happens when we get to this point, goes to district court, is the person will call us and say, oh, you know, whatever reason, um, and because we haven't had a hearing yet, we tell them if they get the septic system pumped and pay us a hundred-dollar fine to cover our administrative costs, cause we don't have as much in it at that point in time, we then withdraw the complaint from the court. That's ninety-nine towns out of a hundred, that's how it goes. But every once in a while, you get that one that.
I see another guy for construction without a permit and fines twelve thousand, and he paid fifty dollars so far.
Yeah, was that, um, I don't know who that one was offhand.
Down in Siskiyou.
Oh, yeah, I know, I know which one that is. That was the tenant at George Phillips' property there.
So that fifty, fifty holds off the dogs, I guess?
No.
Okay.
No, because he came in and he made arrangements. Um, he eventually got the permits in order, cause he, he was getting, the violation was because he didn't have the permits. George Phillips stepped in as the property owner and he made all that right. Got the proper permits, inspections and everything else. These fines were still outstanding. Back in May, the defendant came in. I told him we can settle those twelve-thousand-dollar fines out of court, five-hundred dollars apiece. It was two of them. He said he'd have them paid off. We had an agreement they'd be paid off by the end of June, by June thirtieth. And haven't heard another word from him since. So I sent him a notice that those full judgments are now due, which I would anticipate will capture his attention again.
Then we have that guy down in Wendy, Wendy Hill there, he says, go take care of that a long time ago, still didn't take care of it.
That, that's at CGA. That's gonna be the same thing. I don't know, nothing, to me, nothing, they're, they're nothing compared to the one we had for a hundred-dollar zoning permit for a shed down Strawberry Field. But at the end of the day, the guy came in, got a hundred-dollar permit. And between fines and legal fees and court hearings, not just at district court, but court of common pleas, they were facing contempt of court at one of those hearings. Um, they dished out eighty-five-hundred dollars. I don't understand it and I never will.
Should take care of stuff like that, Brad, you know.
You're good?
Yeah, I'm good. It just amazes me, somebody don't take care of it.
I know, I see that, too. All right, we move to supervisors' comments. You have my, um, report. And I think that kinda stands, stands by itself. Anybody has any questions? Or you wanna ask it another time? You can. Any comments from anybody else?
I have a comment. Uh, October first, the next meeting, uh, my wife, Livy, is having, uh, double hip replacement on the right side, so I don't know that I'll be here for that meeting.
No dancing that night?
No dancing that night.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? All right, uh, moving on to old business. Todd, you wanna lead us through the Penn Waste contract penalty assessments?
Yeah. As of course all the board knows, uh, we were having some collection issues with Penn Waste for quite some time. We had a total of six events where there were seven-hundred-and-eighty-eight homes missed over those six events. One alone was three-hundred-and-ten, uh, one Friday. And our contract allows us to assess a penalty of a hundred dollars per missed stop. So you're looking here at, uh, total assessments then, uh, for that time period over those six events, uh, was seventy-eight thousand eight-hundred dollars. Of course, Penn Waste reached out to us and asked if there was anything that could be done, uh, to negotiate that penalty. And after some discussion and, um, discussion, uh, you know, with, uh, some of the board members, this is what's being proposed. We thought better than the cash. Maybe we can get something out of them that benefits the community, the, the customers as a whole. So these are the four things that they have agreed, you know, to do and, and they proposed. They would pay a ten-thousand-dollar assessment to the township. But then, this is not part of our current contract and we just started our contract, three-year contract in July. So they would provide spring yard waste collection, which would be curbside, in April of twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, and twenty-eighth, on those specific dates. They would do one fall yard waste collection. Again, that would be curbside, uh, November, and then October, you know, thirty-first and October thirtieth, uh, in twenty-five, twenty-sixth, and twenty-seventh. And then they would do a bulk item and construction material. Now, that would be for residents only, no commercial, you know, we don't want contractors, you know, storing everything up, bringing it here and not to the landfill or the incinerator. Uh, that would be a drop-off event. Uh, that would be in March of each year, in twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, and twenty-eighth.
What do you mean, drop-off?
You'd have to bring it here to the, yeah, curbside, you can put it right out front. Drop-off because it, they're gonna require dumpsters, you know.
Oh, and it's gonna be dropped off on this?
And they would, to me, ideally, it'd be best in our yard back here. Gives people area to turn around and, and everything else. Uh, but you would have to bring it here. So if you had the old refrigerator or whatever, but, you know, frankly, there's no reason they need to bring those types of items, but they may want to, uh, because our contract allows you to put one large item out a week. Anyway, now, you can't put, uh, you know, if you have like that old skid, you know, if you replace some doors in the house, you have an old kitchen sink, you know, things like that that are kinda sitting around, construction material. They will not collect that stuff at, at curbside. One we see a lot is the old commode sitting along the side of the road. They're the types of things that won't be collected with your regular trash. But these are the types of items they could haul here, uh, at no cost.
I've seen some very creative things done with flowers.
Yeah, I have, too.
In toilets like that, flower pots and whatnot.
But, uh. So, um, if the board finds this agreeable, we just need motion to accept, uh, this proposal in lieu of the seventy-eight thousand eight-hundred-dollar assessment.
I make a motion to accept the proposed settlement. Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Penn Waste.
That we would, uh, accept the proposed settlement with Penn Waste. Questions? Call for the vote?
Aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative, so we have accepted that.
Ryan, that's what they call the art of the deal.
Todd, one more question.
Yes.
So for the November first fall yard sale at curbside, um, do you have to make an appointment?
No.
No, they're just gonna go around and run?
For the curbside, they'll go, they'll run their regular routes.
Okay.
And whatever you have out in yard waste, they'll collect.
So whatever, no like one bin limit or anything, just whatever?
They did not.
You have to start to accumulate it a week or two ahead of time?
Yeah, yep. Now, we'll get information out in the newsletter and everything. And, uh, we'll try to publicize it through social media. There probably will be some instruction as far as like if you have tree limbs, you know, they, they shouldn't be longer than four foot in length or, you know, something to that effect, um, tied up and bundled. But we'll get that info out.
All right, Miller Park expansion update, Todd?
Yeah, um, just wanted to give you a quick update here. Uh, we, we have the subdivision plan completed. And, um, of course, this is the existing Miller Park now. This is Strawberry Road. This is the, shrink that down just a hair. This is the current boundary. It's a little sliver here, but then the, the Miller family farm comes up through here, around all this area. So this area right here, this triangular section, it's a little over thirteen acres, is what's being subdivided. And would become part of and an extension of the Miller Family Park. This here is about ready to go to planning commission. We just, uh, have a couple of things that need to be added that the Miller family asked to be added, some easements and so forth, uh, which are, are not an issue. So the, the plan is that it will be coming before the board of supervisors for your November meeting for, for approval. It'll go to our planning commission in October. So just wanted to let you know where we are with that.
Does that have to be advertised or?
No.
Okay, I didn't think so. Have to make sure. All right, questions on that?
Did we make a final deal on that, find that?
Yeah, it was the, uh, the two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand.
Okay, so we did. So now that, now we can rezone now, right?
That'll be part of that. We'll do that as well at the November meeting, correct.
When do they get the money or have it already?
No, we, uh, once this plan is finalized, before it even comes to the board, we'll sign the agreement of sale and I think we have that, we give them a two-thousand-dollar, I think it is, deposit. And then after the subdivision is done in November, the plan will get recorded and, you know, any day after that. So we, we could have ownership of it probably by middle of November.
Okay. Paul Smith and Mason Dixon Library update. Um, I can do that. You had in your packet what I had prepared as a newsletter article. I'll do some editing and Todd, I'll, I'd have it done, but I'll do it in Word and send it to you, um, so you'll have that. In, in essence, um, they really didn't have much of a choice. So both libraries have voted to become a branch, uh, very reluctantly. They have voted to do that. The municipalities, uh.
If, if I may pose a hypothetical question, what happens when they shut it down?
When you shut it down?
When, when the York County library system shuts down, the libraries.
Well, they're not shutting it down.
Not immediately, but that's been speculated, hasn't it?
Well, at one time, they were planning to close Mason Dixon and close Huffnager and just have Paul Smith. But that's been, that's been abandoned. What they'll do in the future, who knows, but I, I don't think that's a plan.
Okay.
Their option to become independent would have essentially done that, but, you know, how, how do they, you, you lose your state and, and, um, county funding. You know, and I don't know if you're aware, but there is a part of your property tax is a library tax that generates about, um, two, I don't know if it was two-point-seven or eight million dollars that goes to the library system. So it is taxpayer money. Yet they don't let the local libraries go to their meetings. They won't give them minutes to the meetings. So the municipalities, being New Freedom, Shrewsbury, and ourselves, um, are all still planning a meeting with the county commissioners. There are a couple of things that research has shown that this board, which is now basically appointed by Robert, I think, Lambert, the director, is, is just professionals from the York area. But from what has been found in the original documentation, it's required that five of those members are from the libraries. And that has not been done. And York County Planning Commission is supposed to, or the commissioners, the three commissioners are supposed to approve all the board members, which they have not done. So we wanna talk about that, plus the fact you keep saying you can't do anything, but you're giving them two-plus-million dollars a year of our money. And you say you can't do anything to influence the library. So we still have those issues. But the libraries had to do something, so they've elected to become a, uh, branch. I've sent, um, uh, a memo to, uh, Carl Nock, who is on the board here at Paul Smith, that I do wanna get concurrence from the board. And it just essentially is trying to give him some negotiation points, because they've agreed to become a branch with all these items to be negotiated. So they've kinda lost their negotiating power by not maybe waiting, but I guess they felt they had to get it done. So what, what I've said to Carl is, we're only gonna make any future contributions to the friends of the library. There'll be no board for the library, but we're not gonna give it to York County. We're gonna give it to the, the support group for the library, which are the friends of the library. And that anything we give has to be a guarantee that that will stay under the control of the friends and it won't be diverted to York County library system. And there'll be no decrease in funds appropriated by York County library system to Paul Smith to offset what, what we give them. And then I also said additionally, since Paul Smith Library hours and services are scheduled to be reduced, the township board may consider reducing its contribution, potentially equivalent to percent the operating hours are reduced. And I think they're all critical because the director of the library, Robert Lambert, is anticipating that all municipalities will increase their donations by fifty percent. And we're saying, no, we're not gonna do that. Um, and maybe that gives them some power, but how do you justify that? How do you say to citizens and residents that, well, you know, we're gonna reduce the services and all, but we're still giving as much money? So none of that makes sense. And, and both those libraries are, are profitable. That's the thing. This, this money's gonna go to York and to other areas where they're losing their shirt. And I suspect if we could get all the financials, Todd, that we'd find out it might be a similar story to what you're gonna tell about the SPCA and what these people were paid to. But, uh, but we'll still be meeting with the county commissioners. It's not gonna change the decision, but there's still those issues that we think should be discussed, especially board members not being properly appointed and approved. And the fact that they do have a powerful weapon in the money. And, um, they're not subject to the right to know because they're, uh, charitable. But how do you take public money and not let people go to an open meeting? I, I just don't think they can have closed meetings, but that's what they're doing. But at any rate, or, or, I don't think Todd need a motion, just are we okay with that general approach? And I think Shrewsbury, Borough, and New Freedom are taking a similar approach. So are we good?
Yeah, I'd like to see you go up there and take that on. Would you go up and take that on for the commissioner?
Yeah, yeah, cause I've been involved.
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
And if I can't, Todd, well, he stayed pretty much up to date on what's going on, too. But it's, and I give him credit, you know, we've had our issues with Buck Buchanan and EDUs and all in the past, but he has been really good. He's done the bulk of the work. He's done the bulk of the work. I have to say, he's done a good job. And then it's Andy Bobby, um, from New Freedom and myself. And we've met with, um, you know, with, um, our local legislatures, and we've been and met with this Robert and some of the board a couple of times, and none of it helps. I mean, I think it's a shame, because I don't think it's good for the community or for the library. And the library has a good group of people on their board, and Mason Dixon does as well, and they, they've been fighting it too. So, there will only be, I think, three member libraries left, one, once this is done. The rest will all be branches and have no control over what happens. Okay, well, I'll stay with those things, and that's kind of what we'll be presenting, and hope it helps them negotiate.
I appreciate that.
So-
I got a question though, because initially, I think when they were trying to take over, uh, the Paul Smith Library, we thought maybe they were trying to get the building and then maybe possibly resell it, but if you could recover the issue, um, the library doesn't actually own that property, is that correct?
They own the building.
Oh, they own the building?
They own the building, which was all bought with local
Okay.
Community contributed money. None of that money to buy that, to build that building came from, but they do rent the land from the Y. And the library board had been back and forth on whether they wanted to keep the building or whether they, I think they may want the library system to take it over and put that expense to them.
I guess.
And the library does pay, you know, the York County library system does payroll, but this library pays for all the people that work there. And, you know, so they're covering all their expenses. And in, in the last nine years, they've been in the black for eight of the nine years. And so is Mason Dixon. Kind of a sad affair, and the kind of argument I make is, everything else in Pennsylvania is, keep it local. Good decisions are made local. Why's the library an exception? And that's not being made local. It's being made up in York. All right, you want, want to talk about the other?
Perfect segue into the York County SPCA. As you know, from, from discussion earlier, the York County SPCA, uh, is expressing concern with their, their fiscal situation, their finances, and, uh-
Have they been responsible?
And the, the new contracts for two thousand twenty-six will be coming out in September. I don't know what they're going, going to look like, but I can tell you that currently, from municipalities, they're collecting between two and three hundred thousand dollars in contributions. And the SPCA is looking for that to increase in twenty-six to eight hundred and forty thousand dollars.
That's, that's a lot.
Yeah, um, and, you know, they keep citing rising costs. The York County Administrators and Managers, uh, Organization, we've met with the director twice. One of those meetings was with the Executive Committee from the board. And, uh, that, the, the one with the Executive Committee was, I would say, more of a listening session for them to hear the grievances from the municipalities. And, uh, that was, that was very well attended. There were forty-some municipalities represented out of the seventy-two. LaM share the very same concerns that we share. The director, I, you know, I frankly, I'm kind of tired of hearing about the insurance costs rising a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which I understand. But it's really hard to justify that when you're, you're really hurting for money to just in the, the personnel and the salary. And I, I gave everybody a, a copy of, and this came from their tax form, nine ninety. But when you look at their overall salary and wages, in two thousand twenty, total salary and wages was one million. In two thousand twenty-four, it rose to two point six million. Total expenses in twenty-four were two point seven million, and twenty-four was five point three million. And the top key officers, you know, it's the director, um, director of medical, director of housing or whatever. Their finance director, and including the veterinarian. In two thousand twenty, that total salary, uh, package for the five of them was three hundred and forty-nine thousand. In twenty-four, that rose to eight hundred and ten thousand.
Same number of people, two, five people.
And, and the director, um, in two thousand twenty was a hundred and nineteen thousand. And two thousand twenty-four increased to one hundred and ninety-nine thousand. So-
I don't know anybody who wouldn't like a six thousand and seven degrees.
Well, you know, I don't blame the guy if they're willing to give it to him, but
I think the taxpayers need to be put in the bill.
It's, it's really difficult for, all the municipalities that have been there to hear that, you know, we're really distressed and we're having a hard time when you're seeing these types of increases. You, you don't, I mean, no employer increases your pay if they don't have the money to pay for it, you know, so-
Unless they're forcing people to pay it.
Yeah, so, the, um, the bottom line is, you know, it's a waiting game now for that to come in here in September, and we'll see what they are throwing out at us. The SPCA, the contract only covers services for the dogs, basically, because they will still continue to service cats regardless of where they come from. And really what it boils down to, most of it has to do with strays. Because, and their current policy, as you know, they will not accept a stray from a resident, which started their battle with Adams County, because everybody from York was going to Adams County, and Adams County was becoming overwhelmed. So, the last meeting I was at, the director indicated that it sounded like, starting in January, they will now again accept strays being brought in by residents. But, uh, so there's, there's another meeting coming up with the administrators group in two weeks, week and a half, without the director SPCA there to talk about some things, and, uh-
So, we're actually paying five thousand dollars a year now for a few strays that go up there.
Yeah.
Which we think is in the single digits.
Yeah, because, um, and that's one of the things a lot of municipalities are having trouble with, is that, you know, that the math with what's in their report for the number of animals. When I ask what ours was for the, for the last year since this policy kicked in, um, twelve strays were taken up from Shrewsbury Township. And when I ask, well, who brought these in, you know, if you can't have a resident bring them in, who's bringing them in? Because state police are not hauling the dogs, you know? And the response I got was that animal control officer. Well, you have to have a contract with an animal control officer for them to take. They're not going to come into Shrewsbury Township if they're not getting paid. So, I don't know who these animal control officers are. But in that email, it stated that seven of those came, which is another issue, came from Mason Dixon Animal Hospital. And he, he acknowledged in the email that they don't track where those are coming from when they need emergency care. So, they could be coming, you know, from farthest corners of the county. They could be coming from Maryland.
Well, what happens? Somebody takes a stray up there and leaves it, or?
Yeah, they, apparently, there's some kind of agreement between Mason Dixon Animal Hospital and the SPCA. If a dogger is brought in there, and, you know, it needs medical attention, emergency medical attention, that Mason Dixon will take care of it. But then, once that's done, then the SPCA will resume responsibility.
But Mason Dixon should be paying half of our-
Yeah, or Mason Dixon should be tracking where these animals are coming from, and he said in his email, they do not do that.
Also helpful, but if they have a contract with Mason Dixon, they'd still take the animals from Mason Dixon regardless, correct?
I would think, because they don't know where they're coming from anyway. So, bottom line is, is, um, really, it, it's quite a sum of money for probably half a dozen, even if you go on the high side, a dozen. So, I'm going to reach out to, to New Freedom, the animal rescue that we have in our own township, and talk to them to see if, uh, if maybe we can work something out with them for strays.
We're anticipating they want a quadruple.
Yeah, it's supposedly, it's supposedly based on the number of animals that-
Then ours might go down.
Yeah.
I love your optimism, Mark.
So, stay tuned.
Thank you. It's, um, both of those are sad cases, I think. All right, so we go to new business, and one is, um, we need to, uh, ratify a new maintenance department employee, Robert Berry. He has started on September second, so hopefully-
Which was yesterday.
Hopefully, we're going to keep him, um, but-
I hope he gets paid for that, because we haven't voted on this yet.
That's, that's right, that's-
I'm kidding.
We, we had, I believe it was a hun- I think I have the right number now, a hundred and twenty-two resumes that were received. We interviewed five individuals. And we narrowed it down and, of course, offered the job to Robert Berry. And this person, if you recall from previous meetings, Mike wanted to get him on board now with the winter season coming up, with Ryan coming over into the admin side in January full-time.
And he lives close by, so, he had a lot of requirements.
Yeah, he's not far from here, so, probably three miles. I don't even know if it's that far.
Seven dollars? Wow, I'm sure it's outside of seven.
Yeah, it's up here, um, do you know where, I think it's Ridgeview?
Ridgeview.
Yeah, Ridgeview, right.
Yeah, up past the Glime Rock Alliance Church, so.
So, questions from anybody?
No, but I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Ooh, it might have already passed.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the, or re- I guess ratify, we'll call it, the employment of Robert Berry. No further questions, we shall vote.
Aye.
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 Tell him he's safe now. All right, we have, um, I guess the standard, Todd, this time of the year, the municipal minimum obligation.
Yeah, this is, uh, for the pension, um, we're required to do this. The, the ratios and everything come to us. We just kind of fill in the projected payroll for the remainder of the year, um, and we do the calculation. And we have to have this back to them by, I think, October third. Uh, the governing body has to approve it in September. And it's more of an acknowledgement than, than an approval. But the minimum obligation from the township for the pension plan is fifty-four thousand, five hundred and three dollars. As you know, typically, all that, if not most of it, we receive in, uh, state aid for the pension. So, and that's the number that we're required to show in our budget. So, just need approval of that.
Any questions or a motion?
Make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-six municipal minimum obligation.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minimum municipal obligation. If no questions, we'll vote.
Aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative. We've approved that. I guess we're looking, Todd, just, oh, we have the contract award for Hayntown and Windy Hill Parks.
Yes, um, just to go out for bid, we had, uh, three bidders, um, as you can see. And this is the, the total bid for Hayntown, which is the park improvements, expanding the playground, so forth, here, this site. And then also the construction of the pavilion at Windy Hill Park. As you can see, it's quite a range in pricing between the three. Uh, the lowest bidder was SLC Excavating, four hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Uh, the deduct alternate would be if we purchased the picnic tables ourselves. And then the deduct alternate number two would be if we did not include fencing between the playground and, says, create a trail, but I think we really need to keep that.
Oh, yeah.
So, that four hundred and twenty thousand is inclusive of those two items.
Okay, that includes the deduct.
So, Anne Yost, who is with, uh, YSM Landscape Architects, who is our consultant, who put the bid specs together, did the bid tabulation, reviewed the bids. She is recommending that the board approve the contract to SLC Excavating. Uh, she has worked with them in the past, and she said they do a good job. And, uh, with the equipment that we are purchasing through Co-Stars, along with the, this contract, the total is six hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Uh, and our budget, uh, based on grants that we received and our match is eight hundred and forty-two thousand. So, we'll actually be able to send a little money back to the state too, and they'll love us for that. So-
The additional equipment is, uh, playground related?
Correct. And we were able to purchase that through Co-Stars, Pennsylvania Co-Stars, yeah.
Have we ever used SLC?
We have not, no. Anne, Anne has worked with them quite a bit, and she, she said they've been very good to work with.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the, uh, contract award to SLC Excavating, in the amount of four hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars?
I'll second it.
Uh, do you want the total cost in there too, Todd?
No, just the contract's fine, yeah.
So, I have a motion and a second to approve the award to SLC Excavating. Questions? We shall vote.
Aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative. That's approved. And now, Todd, we have the draft regional official map. This would be just submitted to, um, York County Planning Commission for their review.
Yeah, again, you know, this is, uh, what I gave you is just Shrewsbury Townships. We do show a little bit in the, the boroughs, but it proposes areas that we would see maybe as future parks, you know, walking paths, biking trails, and so forth. If you remember, the, the purpose of the official map is, and the perfect example is what we're doing here now with Miller Park. That came about, and, and that's this section right here. That came about because we knew they were looking to sell, and there were developers looking at the property. And what it does is, if there's a plan or something that comes in, and that parcel is identified for future public use, it allows the municipality to put that plan on hold for up to one year, uh, to decide if they want to purchase the land and, and work out a fair market price with either the developer or the property owner. So, the regional one's going to be a little more detailed in the boroughs. Ours will remain the same as, as it has been, so. But, uh, each municipality needs to approve and, uh, rec- approve authorization for us to send the official map, the regional map, to York County Planning Commission for, you know, their review and comment. So, that's the authorization I need.
Sumut.
Second.
Thank you, both. We have a motion and a second that we would approve submitting to York County Planning Commission the draft regional official map. If no questions, we'll call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative. That's so approved. Information, I guess, Todd, on Boundary Road?
Yeah, again, I just, uh, this is just some information. Solicitor Buck's office is doing a little research on this. What happened is, uh, this property, um, there's a new owner of this property, which actually is situated in New Freedom Borough, across Boundary Road here, the former portion of Boundary. That is all township. Boundary Drive is a township road. And back in two thousand, I think it was two, uh, we found in the minutes where they approved closing that road, you know, with, but basically with barricades and closing it to traffic. We can't find any record where it's been officially abandoned by the township, and we really should do that. It hasn't been used for twenty-some years. And the, and the way it all came about is, there's a new property owner, as I said, here in New Freedom Borough. There's a small garage right in this area here, which was always accessible by Boundary Drive, and the new owner would like-
Prior to two thousand two.
Pardon?
Prior to two thousand two.
Correct. And now, they just, you know, the previous owners, they went across the grass or whatever. And, uh, he would like to make some improvements, but he wants to make sure he's not going to do it in what is a public street and may be torn out in the future, so. We'll see this future meeting or two, because, uh, Tim Buck's going to research that to, to see if we need to do that formally by ordinance or resolution.
But in the process of abandoning, does he automatically then take ownership?
Well, and that's one of the things, I'm not quite sure how this one works, and the reason I say that-
I thought it was fifty percent.
If the road belongs to us, but he lives in the borough.
Yeah, because typically what happens- Yeah, because typically what happens is when a road is abandoned, find a center line and each property owner gets half of it. But this, you know, it just seems odd that that property would have been in, you know, Shrewsbury Township, you know, 12 feet or something. But, so that's, that's what Tim
Okay.
Tim Buck's going to have to give us an answer on, because I, I don't know that answer.
Okay, no action now, just, just for information.
That's just informational.
It's just a point of interest. Put that map back there again, will you?
Yep. Second here.
You see where the yellow line ends and it looks like the main street of New Freedom is coming up vertically there? You see that?
Yeah, right here?
Yeah, look, just follow the course. You see, can you see the roof of a house? Just keep on going up with your air.
Yeah.
Right there, that house? That was built by one of the Bowser's. The original farmhouse was down off of Bowser Road.
Okay.
That house was built there by one of the Bowser's to keep New Freedom from annexing his farm.
Put it there so they couldn't put the road through.
So they couldn't come through. They wanted to annex his farm. So he put it right there and stopped New Freedom in their tracks.
Okay, interesting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Glad we named the road after him. He did us a good service.
Well, they owned that whole farm there, you know, goes through down to Country Club Road, cuts around there. They, they donated where the schoolhouse is there, where the church is over there on Country Club Road, where the cemetery is up there. Bowser's donated all that.
Wow.
They originally had, they originally had the church in their house, right on Bowser Road. They had a partition in there. They could open it up and have the church services in their house.
Love the history.
Yeah, I went to that one room school, so I found out a little bit about it.
All right, the last thing is a stormwater operation and maintenance agreement. Standard language, standard agreement, Todd?
Correct, yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the stormwater operation and maintenance agreement for 3521 Bowser Road.
Second.
Thank you. Thank all three of you. Questions? We shall vote.
Aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative, that is approved.
A lot of cars going in that building.
There is no correspondence tonight. And
Final public comment?
Unless Brad wants to say something under public comment.
Get that rescue unit yet?
Still a couple months
Still making the papers?
It's coming. All right, we have a motion.
Motion for adjournment.
We are adjourned.